Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. We will be returning to this room after we are in executive session. We anticipate that taking a half an hour or less. All right, sorry for the delay, everyone. Thank you for your patience. We are now going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? I'll move. Second.
I'll second.
Jenny, will you please call the roll? You're good.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. And now we'll move into our presentation about Belcan.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Oh, sorry.
Getting used to our new mics.
Getting used to our brand-new mics. Tonight, Mr. Coney, along with Mr. Ford, are going to come up and talk about the relationship we have with Belcan and what we're moving forward with. That's your big intro.
So, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come present this evening. We have an awesome opportunity to be able to provide some great experiences for our students that we wanted to give you some high-level information about and give you an opportunity to ask any questions you might have. So this is an opportunity to capture sort of the momentum around cybersecurity and the need for that around Ohio and southwest Ohio and the country. And the reason that this is such a big, you know, opportunity for us is because we've sort of been able to tap into some community partners that we've got, some business partners, and understanding what we've got that is in the local area. So when we talk about the introduction to cybersecurity and why that's such a big deal, I put a simple stat up there of 1 million and 3.2 million. Our best information we've got from other folks is that there are 1 million unfilled cybersecurity jobs in the country currently, and some estimates have that as high as 3.2 million unfilled cybersecurity jobs by 2021. When we talk about preparing our students for their careers and their future, we want to be able to provide them with opportunities for growing industries, not only in southwest Ohio but across the country. So that's part of that federal, that growing trend across the country. The federal government has come out with standards about cybersecurity and efforts around that. The state of Ohio has done that, Ohio Department of Education has done that, all within the past four months or so. There's also been this trend, what we talked about, Mr. Miller had brought this to us, the idea of not white-collar jobs, not blue-collar jobs, but new-collar jobs, those that are high-tech but may not require a college education in order to enter or be successful in that field. And so us being at the forefront of this and tapping into what is a local and national trend is really important for us moving forward. And so what we want to do is kind of walk you through a little bit of how this works going forward. It really does provide us the opportunity to be a leader in the state of Ohio and nationally. We'd love for this to be the center for cybersecurity in the country where people are moving here because of the great experiences that they get. Part of what we've got here tonight is a partnership which is really unique, and I'll let Mr. Miller and Mr. Ford. Mr. Ford is Vice President at a company called Belcan locally here, and want to give him and Mr. Miller an opportunity to kind of talk about why this partnership, who Belcan is. I'll let Mr. Ford introduce himself and then let Mr. Miller talk about why this partnership is so important. So I'll let you jump in there.
Belcan is a 60-year-old company this month. We are international aerospace by where we originated. A lot of aerospace work through acquisition and over the last couple of years, they've added an IT business, a government services business, and recruiting staffing business. So we, as a company, very focused on how do we bring engineering talent, IT talent, cyber talent, both in the commercial and government services spaces.
Probably the best thing about Mr. Ford, if I can say this, is he's a Lakota parent and has four kids?
I do.
In the district? Three in the district, one coming up?
Four in.
Four in. So he's well-vested and I think wants to see this go, not just for all of our students but for his four as well. And actually, this conversation started through a mutual acquaintance of a networker, Steve Wannamaker. I don't know if any of you know Steve or not, but Steve and I were at an event, and he talked about Belcan and what Belcan was doing with Cincinnati Public. And so that kind of got us talking, and then he, if nothing else, Steve Wannamaker is a connector and got us all connected, and Todd Wesley, and Keith Coney, and Katie Bauer, Andrew Wheatley. And I met with Rob and several Belcan employees about what this could look like. The slide up before had the 1 million jobs now, which is very intriguing, plus 3.2. And not just to repeat what Keith was saying, but essentially, Belcan wants southwest Ohio to be the cybersecurity hub of the country or of the globe. And so we took a tour of Belcan about a month or so ago and was just very impressed with the employees, what they do, and saw it as an avenue for our kids to get in and start something. And so I think it has a huge upside, potential upside, for our students, and we see this growing. But I'll throw it back to Keith to sort of talk about the curriculum a little bit and anything else.
Sure.
So this ties right in with everything we're talking about with real-world learning, with how do we, why do we partner with businesses and companies that are out there that provide these services, rather than provide curriculum that just leads to a test maybe or at the end. We are having students be able to get certifications, they're able to give them industry credentials, which lead right into paying jobs and internships at the end. But that can only happen when we have strong partnerships with businesses out there. Of course, a piece of this is a concern that you all have, is about how does that partnership work? And so we're working with our legal department in terms of what does that partnership agreement do look like for the cost for the district, the liability that the district takes on, some smaller pieces in there. We're working through that currently, and we'll have that for you in the coming weeks. But I think that's the foundation for what we're looking for moving forward.
The other thing, yep, sorry, I'm jumping. The other thing that I would say to you as well is since we started the conversations with Belcan, IBM has reached out to us. Also, University of Cincinnati has a cyber range, so we've met them as well. So I think there's pieces of this to all of this. And also, President Trump and the federal government came out with the National Cyber Strategy for the U.S., and they talk about K-12 education and that as well, and they just came out with that probably, I don't know, six weeks ago, maybe? So it's all linked to everything else that we're doing.
Good. Tag team, it's perfect. The other piece of this is obviously the technology side of this. And Mr. Wesley has been a part of these plans all the way through, and just want to give him opportunity to put our minds at ease about what this looks like for our students and to be working in this kind of environment, so.
Thank you, Mr. Coney. Looking at this, first of all, I'm a huge fan for our students, but if I'm looking at the technology needs and solutions, all of the technology for the infrastructure is in place, the devices that we are planning to roll out to our high school students fully aligned and are fully compatible with this, and we have already provided the information security agreement with Belcan to start reviewing. So those pieces are in place. We will, if this goes through, start to explore further integrations into our student portal so it's easily accessible to our students pretty much 24/7. Anything I can answer?
Perfect. The final piece we want to talk about is, so what does this look like rolling forward? And we have started to put this together, and what is unique about this kind of program as opposed to some others is that you're really gathering certifications as you go through this process, and it is a little bit more self-paced than we're typically used to in a school setting. And what we wanted to do was be able to provide an opportunity at the very beginning for students to be able to be successful and gain certifications through this process and not wait two or three years as they go through the whole program. And so what we're proposing is that for next school year, that we would have sophomores and juniors be able to start off in Cyber One, which is listed on that slide, and then provide an opportunity for seniors for next year to do what we're calling a cyber sprint, to be able to work through as much of that material as possible. Hopefully, Cyber One and Two in one year, which is a heavy lift. We're also looking at opening up next summer to be able to have students get an early start into some of that schoolwork if they're interested in. It is a little unique, and we are trying to, working through that as we go, but I wanted to give Mr. Wheatley an opportunity to talk through his role as Secondary Curriculum Director about what this looks like from a student perspective, from a teacher perspective, as we build out the curriculum as we go through this.
All right.
Yep?
That's not going to work. Here we go. Yeah, from a teacher and a student standpoint, as you can see and Keith kind of talked about briefly, is we've wrapped in the senior course, which is, we're calling the Cyber Sprint, essentially into 18 months. And from a student perspective, that's not too different than what they might take in a higher-level class where they have summer work to do before the school starts. And so that's what we're looking at for this next year, is for those students to take on this challenge, start over the summer, which will give them the opportunity to work through a lot of the certifications, and that way they can get into the school year. And how we kind of expect this to look during the school year is that the teacher in this class is going to be using class time with a lot of the connections that we have with our partners, where they can be sending in experts, they can be working through activities and simulations that replicate what it will look like in the field in cybersecurity, and then they can use their homework time essentially to work through the certifications and be able to get the Cyber One and Cyber Two certifications done by the end of their senior year. And that would also hopefully include, well, will include, an internship experience for them either at the end of the second semester or during that next summer after they have graduated. But what's interesting about this, and it's a little bit different than a lot of courses, is that this is really certification-based. So usually, it's, you know, seat-time-based, and then you take an assessment at the end of the year, but what we're really looking here is for those certifications so that when they finish, that they're job-ready. And as our partners have talked to us about beyond just Belcan, is that if they have those things that are listed up there, especially if they complete all the certifications as the Cyber One and Cyber Two, these students will have no problem getting a job right out of high school, doing pretty well for themselves. So with that, students that aren't seniors, starting sophomores essentially and juniors, can take Cyber One and Cyber Two. The idea is that Cyber One and Cyber Two The idea is that Cyber One and Cyber Two really gives you a really strong platform to be job-ready when you leave. But then Cyber Three, what that does is it gives you options. So they're not expected to finish all those certifications, but they can kind of take two different paths there with the direction they want to go with that, which is either from, you know, you have Certified Ethical Hacker path, and then you also have the Defensive Programming, and then Information Systems, I think is more of kind of like an administrative path, if I understand that correctly. And then you also see around there wraparound courses. So one of the things that was articulated to us is that this type of job isn't just, you know what, oftentimes we think about with somebody, when we talk about cybersecurity or hacking, they're not just sitting, you know, in a dark room and plugging away on a keyboard, that this is a very collaborative work. This is work that requires a lot of communication skills and reading and technical writing. And so what we're trying to do here is also take an ELA course and a math course and create a cryptography math and a cyber ethics technical writing courses, wraparound courses, and those would also be available to other students. But we're not looking at doing those until we're probably further down the road around year two or year three, to try to help to support the students and really be in the whole package when they graduate.
And so the, the last piece of this is sort of next steps and timeline, and how's this all work? So once we have sort of a go-ahead, go-ahead here and we have a, an agreement in place, we would start communicating this out to potential students. We would look to have some recruitment parent meetings in the December-January timeframe. This would happen at East and West, and we would, we already have some things that are down that road. There's a cyber club at both high schools, partnered up with UC. There are kids in computer courses right now that we'd like to be able to offer this up to as a recruitment tool. We'll be developing that curriculum throughout from now until, through the spring. We'll also work with establishing staffing, which would be our own staff, our own teachers here on staff would be teaching that in partnership with sort of mentors from Belcan. We would work a spring pilot, so there are a few, few students who have already completed both AP Computer Science classes, and we think they would be very interested in going through the certification process their second semester of their senior year, and give us some really good feedback about what this looks like, help us forward plan a little bit. And then, as we said, there would be a summer sprint for those students entering into that cyber sprint class in the fall. I think those are all the, the pieces that we've got. I'm sure there are plenty of questions that you might have about this. I'd be happy for myself or any of us to answer anything that you, any questions you might have.
Questions?
Can you just talk for 30 seconds about how you pulled a teacher in to go over the courses and?
Sure. So we've had several planning meetings, just to figure out what the capacity is of this program, and we've pulled in one of the computer science teachers from the high school already to kind of look at this and say, where does this fit in with where we are currently? And really, what we'd like to be able to do is streamline all of our computer science offerings. We're a little splintered right now and have offerings that are a variety of paths. And so we're trying to co-create this with our teachers to make sure that it is the right kind of experience for kids, because teaching this kind of level of industry credential to adults is one thing, having it happening with 16, 17-year-old kids is a different story. So we've, we've been right along with them the whole way. Good point.
So Keith, do we feel that we have like a staff, this sounds very technical and high, higher, I think, over my head. Do we feel like we have staff in place that could be taught to do this, could be trained to teach this class?
Absolutely. Yeah. That was why we wanted to bring them in, make sure that we were not putting out something that was impossible. There's a lot of training, there's a lot of work that goes into that.
And we have people that are willing to do, okay.
Yep.
Wow, that's impressive.
I had several questions.
Yes.
Is it additional staffing or staff we already have on hand?
It's repurposing some staff. So there might be a backfill for a section or two of another class, and some of it depends on the number of students we get into these. So we're expecting probably 20 students in the, in the junior sections and a little bit more in the, or a little bit fewer in the senior section. But it would be backfill of a couple of sections probably.
So yes, possibly additional staff?
But it depends on what happens with the rest of the computer science curriculum. So I don't want to commit to additional staff or not additional staff until we fully understand that. I can come back with more information, though, probably in the next month.
I'd appreciate that.
Once we get closer on that. Absolutely.
Additional cost beyond staffing?
So there is cost for the curriculum and for the certifications, and we have a strong partnership with Belcan right now, and that they have.
Currently, we are covering the cost, and we, we plan to for the future. This is important for us to give back to the community. This absolutely supports Mr. Miller's vision of three Es, enlist, employ, or enroll. This, all three would want this student, and the military needs these students. All of these courses, if you take them to university, they give you college credit for them. I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty amazing. It's, it's exactly what I think Lakota wants, it's what I, what I would want my children to have, and which is why, once I heard Lakota might be interested, I was pushing really hard, and I didn't have to push as hard as I thought.
I certainly appreciate your generous support. Thank you very much for that.
I think we all do, we all appreciate that, yeah.
And obviously, part of that partnership agreement would talk about covering costs and liability, and also us trying to work with some outside partners also, because there are other partners of ours who would be interested in having these sorts of students in the future.
I was thinking that as well.
And we're working on that.
So CPS is doing something similar? Are they doing this in-depth of a curriculum dip?
They are not. Actually, we're reworking, we're really reworking the curriculum to be more of the, I came into this role about three weeks before school started with CPS, and kind of based on where it was, I think it was a ready-fire aim. I think we're rethinking it a little bit, taking some time to look at what the students' capabilities are. Both are great districts. The fortunate thing for Lakota is the students are a little bit more prepared for this curriculum than I'm seeing, because we started at TAFT. Great kids, we're going to help them be very successful. I think you're going to get a little bit further here at Lakota, just based on the standard curriculum I'm seeing so far.
I think this is certainly in line with what we've been talking about. You were talking about internships to go with the senior sprint?
Yes.
Do we have enough of those available for all of them to be able to do that?
We're working on that now. So obviously, we are looking for partners, so if any of you have connections within the community that I can get in front of and that Katie can get in front of as well, we'd love to talk about that. What does that mean? How do we get more kids certified? So taking the curriculum, being ready to sit for the exam is one thing, actually covering the cost of the exam is another.
Right. My final question would be the senior sprint, is that just intended for a 19, 20, or would that be a continuing process?
Yeah, it's a one-year.
It's a one-year?
We didn't want to leave out seniors, especially with that first year of really trying to nail in the right type of students, or really shooting for students that probably have some junior science experience, and to create a process to just kind of make sure that we start out strong and have a successful program. But it's meant to essentially be one year, and then we'll just have the three courses like you saw.
Okay, and each course is one semester?
Each course we're looking at is for one year.
It is one year. So our juniors won't get to go all the way through that either then? They, they won't be able to do three if it's a one-year cour, if it's one year each?
No, but you won't be able to do three, but the idea is that the Cyber One and Cyber Two, which a junior will be able to do in the two years, that those certifications right there, like, we specifically wrote the courses that those are the certifications that are expected or you want, leaving those additional ones are really like way above and beyond, and you can probably talk a little bit more about those certifications, what that means to the junior.
So the program offers 10 total certifications. We've selected four of those certifications for Lakota. This is a work-at-your-own-pace program, so if we have a student that just gets this, and they want to do this on their own, and they want to complete all 10, they have every opportunity to do that.
Okay.
So yes, a junior could complete all this. A senior coming in saying, wow, I didn't get on the train as a sophomore, I'm now a senior, and jeez, I like IT, hopefully, we can find a way to fit them into something that will be successful years down the road. I think that's a work in progress. Stay tuned, we'll figure that out, but.
That's all I wanted to hear. All right, thank you, this is great work.
You had talked about some of those wraparound courses that you want to get into down the road. Do you think that they would be able to be dual-purpose, to be able to fulfill their language requirements as well as fulfill the need that they're going to have here?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
I don't have any questions, no. I just appreciate all the work that everybody's doing. I mean, you, we've got a lot of minds that are wrapped around this, and I think that it's going to be great for our schools and our communities, so thank you for that. Looking forward to seeing how it rolls out.
I think this is exactly the forward-thinking planning that we need to be doing, so I appreciate that work. Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming. Seriously, thanks for being here. Sorry we kept you late.
And with that, we will move to the five-year forecast.
Okay, it's that time again. And I, I just attended a meeting today with ODE where we were talking about the deadlines of the five-year forecast, and I think we've talked about how the timeline has changed, and next year it will be the end of November. Well, that's still up in the air.
Oh, wow.
Which, yeah. Well, the, I think the legislation actually said that you will not file them prior to the end of November. So they're talking about, do we need two forecasts a year? Is November the right timeline? So there's still a lot of discussion going on, so I just wanted to throw that in. The purpose, I, I use this slide every time, I know it's like, gosh, Jenny, we've seen this, but I think it's important to talk about, you know, what is the forecast? It's three years of history, and then it's five years of projections. It is a management tool, we do utilize it. It's a snapshot, which is as of today's date. So as things change, the numbers will change, the assumptions will change. And currently, right now, it's October and May, but like I just said, it's changing. Alignment of resources to educational priorities. So we are in something called the Alliance for Excellence in School Budgeting, and it is through the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association. And a team of us actually went for some training, Keith, Matt, myself, and Adam, where we talked about a team approach with the instruction, curriculum, and the finances, and making sure that you work together, you're saying one thing. And so I know we're going to be talking about the strategic plan after this, and once that is approved, it's about taking that strategic plan, taking those instructional priorities, and making sure that our budget matches that, it's aligned. So those framework steps are there, plan and prepare, set instructional priorities, pay for the priorities, implement the plan, and then ensure the stability of the programs. Notable revenue assumptions. Our tax revenue is stable, but if you recall, with the tax changes, you know, you used to be able to deduct your state and local taxes on your, your income tax return, and that's going away. So we saw a lot of people pay their yearly taxes, real estate taxes, all at once before that went away. So we know in last fiscal year, we saw more people paying yearly taxes instead of semi-annual. So when you look at the forecast and you see the tax revenue actually predicting to go down this year, that's why. It's a timing issue. That's all it is, and then it'll return to normal after this fiscal year. The Westchester TIF agreements, and we've talked about that for a few years, but this fiscal year, we'll actually start seeing additional compensation coming in as a result of those TIF agreements that, that we were able to negotiate with them. I guess it's been a couple of years ago now. And then that last bullet, I just think it's, we can never say this enough, but when they make changes in, in tax laws, it, it does impact us locally. The tangible personal property reimbursement that was cut equates to 1.2 mils of an operating levy loss for us annually. The graph, I love graphs. So this is just showing the trends and the assumptions. Like I said, you'll see that dip in 2019. That's totally because of those timing of those tax revenues, like I talked about. And then very modest conservative growth moving forward. I think it's worth talking about also, we have two additional biennium budgets in this five-year forecast. We have a new governor next week, so there's a whole lot of unknowns here. Very conservative increases in state funding, a half a percent increase in the per pupil is what we have estimated. I'm also not estimating any student growth, I'm keeping that flat. And we need to remember that, Chris, is it January, we're going to get our new, we have the demographer working on the enrollment study, and so we'll have that back when we know what our enrollment forecast looks like, then we'll make some adjustments at that time. Expenditure assumptions. Our largest expenditures, we are service industry, is going to be our, our wages and benefits. So wages, we are assuming a 3.35% increase throughout '21, and then in 2022 and '23, a 3%. That's beyond the two contracts that we currently have. The past three years, the increase in wages has been 3%. There are no additional full-time equivalencies for staff that's included in this forecast beyond this fiscal year. So I know Linda talked, asked the question about the cybersecurity. There are no additional FTEs included in the forecast. So like Keith mentioned, repurposing things, we know that when we, and Rob Buggelman knows this, and Rob Kramer every year, and Chris, when we sit down and we look at staffing for the, the year, we take a look at how many first graders do we have, how many staff, and so those are adjusted, and we basically do a staffing audit every year. And maybe we might need one less second-grade teacher, and then it all equals out, maybe we need an additional cybersecurity teacher. So I'm not saying that we're saying we can't do anything innovative or doing anything differently, it's just we're going to weave and, and move and do the things, repurpose the things that we need to do. The other thing that I have on here, we talked about the enrollment study complete in 2019. We're also redesigning what high school is going to look like. So we do have another forecast in May. By that time, we should know what the high school experience should look like and, and know, you know, more than, but that is work that's being done right now. We've talked about the health and dental premiums, but beyond the time period that we have negotiated through '21, in fiscal year '22, we're estimating a 5% increase, and then seven and a half in '23. The reason why you see 5%, our health insurance, our insurances, we pay on a calendar year. So even if we see an increase, you're only going to see it for half of the year, so that's why you see that. And then the last note there is that I, I think it's worth of saying, there were a lot of things that we changed for this year, and those are included in the forecast. All-day kindergarten, specials at the elementary, redistricting, increase in SROs, one-to-one initiatives. There's a lot going on, and that's, and that's included in here, so I just want to make And here, here's the chart for the expenditure trends for this forecasted period. Revenue expenditures and ending cash balance. So you're, you're going to look at this graph, and you're going to notice, if you're paying attention, that in '23, so the blue bar, which is revenues, and the red bar, which is expenditures, you always want the blue bar to be more than the expenditures. In '23, that reverses, and so you're going to see that cash balance start to dip there. And the snapshot of the financial position, this is just the, the numbers that go along with the, the chart. And the snapshot of the financial position, this is just the numbers that go along with the charts. And I mentioned that dipping in 2023. So we are predicting a spending deficit in 2023 of 3.7 million. Our ending cash of 115 million is still over seven months of cash, which is a good thing. I've also, I'm going to look at this. I also try to take a look at longer than the five years. If we try to look out forward and say, okay, if we're returning to a spending deficit and we're starting to dip into our cash and we change nothing, how long could our cash sustain us? So I have assumed a half a percent increase in revenue overall and a 3% increase in expenditures. With that, in fiscal year '26, our cash balance would be right at that 60-day mark. So if nothing changed and the assumptions were correct, you would be looking at, you would need additional revenue in 2026 is when you would be looking at, talking about additional revenue. I'm not saying the L-word.
I know.
Not saying the L-word.
She said that's a delicate lead.
We would be looking. We would be looking. We would be looking. I'm not saying the L-word. But that's always going to be a question. When you start seeing a spending deficit. Now, I will say, it's five years out. There's two biennium budgets, but it could be worse. So it's on our radar. It's a point of discussion. And we, you know, there's red. So beyond 2023, which is what I just talked about, we do have a spending deficit. So one of the things that I am proposing is we review our cash balance policy. And Brad, you're on the policy committee along with Todd. But I will say that we do have a cash balance policy, but it speaks more about our philosophy. And it could be stronger. So I think we need to review it and talk about how we feel about that. Right now, it says that we have a financial philosophy to, that we will not operate or fall below 60 months' worth of cash.
Sixty days.
Sixty days. I said 60 months, didn't I? Woo, 60 days. Which the GFOA, which I mentioned before, they have a recommendation that that's the minimum. So it's where we started and it's worth talking about. We've also talked about reservation of fund balance. Like the state has a state rainy day fund. We've talked about that before too. And so that's something that I think we need to investigate too. And actually, if you look at the five-year forecast on the first page, you'll see those reservations at the very bottom. Reservation of fund balance, textbooks and instructional materials, capital improvements, budget reserve, DPIA, which is old, doesn't even exist anymore. But you're going to see those things there. So it exists for your reference already. But what I would propose is that Matt and I, and I could do most of the research, and that we would take a look at how we feel about it, make some recommendations back to the board, and then have a discussion at a future board meeting about that. So in summary, we have operated with a balanced budget for six years. And this forecast predicts a continued balanced budget through 2022. And we've talked about that spending deficit. As the district finalizes its strategic plan, we talked about aligning it, making sure that we're spending in accordance with those instructional priorities. And then that final bullet there is just that we need to review that fund balance policy and figure out where we believe we should go. That's it.
I guess to spoiler alert, that the strategic plan that we're going to get a rough draft on has one of the four major tenants is fiscal responsibility. So it ties in.
There you go.
Questions?
No, I mean, I think we all attended the regional funding meeting the other day. So I think that, you know, there's kind of anticipation around that. You know, we have the new governors coming in, and so I appreciate the effort into this. And, you know, I just think that there's a lot of things up in the air right now. So looking forward to, in the next year, hopefully getting better clarity. I'm sure you are more than I am probably. But just thank you for your support in that as well.
Yeah, we, Friday will be the last regional meeting of that group. I spoke to a committee for OASBO today. Yeah. It's ongoing work.
For clarification, there's a committee that's looking at school funding. That's, OASBO is the Ohio Association of School Board.
Business officials.
School business officials. And Jenny is one of 16 people who has served on that committee. It's a bipartisan committee put together with state senators. They're both.
State representatives.
Representatives. And their intent is to overhaul the school funding formula. And they referenced how long it has been since that funding formula has been overhauled. And that if you look back at how much our technology and our student needs have changed since the funding formula has changed, it has been in dire need of an overhaul. So it gave me significant hope at least that there is going to be a much better formula coming out of that. And hopefully, whomever the new governor is, will look at that work that comes out of that, that those representatives bring forward. So just for clarification of what's being spoken of up here. So any other thoughts and questions?
Several thoughts. Jenny and I had a chance to speak in detail about this. And I want to say first and foremost, I have complete confidence in your work. And my thoughts are not based on that, as you know, after many years of working together. I'm completely in support of your ideas to look at the spending deficit, the reservation of fund balance, and what we need to do with that and appropriating that appropriately. And the cash balance policy review, I think all of that's completely in line with where we need to go. I will say that for me, as I see deficit spending coming back into our forecast, I don't find that acceptable. And I would only agree to approve this five-year forecast based on the board making a determination that we will take a look at that spending deficit and bring it back into line. It's been a very long uphill climb to get to financial stability. And I think that's a practice that we were doing in the past, and we don't need to go back to it. I think that we have to remember that wonderful things happening in the district, but we're not doing them in isolation. We're still part of the community that supports us. And they still need to be able to agree and approve of what we're doing with our finances. And when I see deficit spending, that's a huge red flag that I don't think we can maintain. This was a tremendous amount of work, Jenny. And I, this is such an invaluable document that you put together with all of the assumptions, with so much information. And I hope we put that up so that everybody can look at that from a community perspective. It's very transparent. Your assumptions are very clear and very easy to follow in there, and I really appreciate that. And I believe our focus should be focused, our focus in our discussion should be on moving that levy back another year, or another year beyond that. And not just about where can we go with things, but how do we reallocate to bring in the new initiatives? And again, I'm not going to approve the five-year forecast unless we have that discussion about deficit spending. So that's where I'm at on it. But thank you. This is terrific work. And you do a great job of reminding us of where we are and where we need to be going.
You mentioned the L-word. You were the first one.
I did, but I was talking about pushing it further away, not bringing it closer.
The, and I've said this before, aside from a tragic event happening to a student or a staff member, the worst thing about my job is asking people for money. So I'm going to put that off as long as we can. And I think it goes back to sort of a common theme that we've been saying, repurposing staff or repurposing what we're doing in education. And I am just as guilty as anybody else. A lot of times, we just start layering things on top of things. And that can lead to increased costs. And certainly, I don't want that. And I think it's just us taking a look at us collectively, a lot of the people in this room, looking at what we're doing and what we're spending money on. But as all of you have a much longer history with Mrs. Logan than I have, but this is a really good five-year forecast. I get your point about the fifth year being red. But in my previous districts, it was year three red, four red, five red, if we were lucky. Only to have three. I'm just, full context, but I get what you're saying.
Well, and the beauty of the five-year forecast too, in my opinion, is that we do it more than once a year. So while we want to address the deficit spending, I mean, if something drastic changes, we aren't living and dying by this one five-year forecast. Correct, Jenny?
No. Just like we talked about in the beginning, it's a management tool. So we know we have things going on. We know we're going to be talking about a strategic plan. We're reimagining high school, the one-to-one. I mean, there's exciting things going on. And making sure that we align everything, we repurpose, that we're, like Matt said, not layering on. As long as we're intentionally doing things and always thinking about what impact does it have on the budget and the future? And making sure that whatever we do is sustainable and that, you know, God forbid, we put all these great things in place and then we're not planning appropriately, and then we can't continue them. So it's a document that's supposed to do exactly what it's doing right now. We're having conversations about it to say, what should we do? What do we believe? So.
And I'm sorry, can you tell me again how many, when there's the red in the five-year at the end, how many months is the cash balance?
So the cash balance in 2023 is over seven months. Of expenditures.
Thank you.
Jenny, how does the permanent improvement levy play into this?
I'm glad you ask. So the permanent improvement levy and fund is not included in the five-year forecast. And what I would recommend is at our next work session, that we have a conversation about the PI levy and the PI fund. That's the one that our needs, I mean, we've got aging facilities. We have lots of great things going on with innovation and technology. And that's the levy, I said the L-word. That's the fund that I think we need to really think about sooner. Other than this one.
Still a lot of green space in Liberty Township.
Yeah. You're right.
50% built out.
That's a lot of space.
It is.
Yeah.
And we do, we have aging buildings. We have high school redesign going on. There are so many things that are happening. And I know that that PI fund has lost steam over the years with all the things we've done from safe and secure entrances, which is what it originated with. There, I would love some wisdom from veteran school board members. I hear what you're.
Looking at me when he said that.
I looked this direction because it's not that direction. You know, I agree with you that looking at the red and seeing the red in the fifth year is not something that any of us want to see. What I struggle the most with right now, though, is knowing that the reliability of that fifth year in a five-year forecast is not great. It's, like you said, just a planning management tool. However, we live in a community that does not want to see red in that fifth year. I understand that. What I struggle the most with is that it's, I mean, new governor, new possible funding formula, PI conversations that haven't been had. I agree, we need to have conversation, but I'm not quite sure. I'm just, I'm kind of at this, I know it needs to be approved, but there's so much up in the air and there are so many things that could possibly affect what that looks like. I don't know, what have you done in the past in situations like this? I guess that's an open-ended question because I just, I don't know what lever, like what's the conversation? What would the conversation be right now to get to that approval? Does that make sense?
Well, for me, for me to make that a unanimous approval, it would be that we agreed as a board, we were going to get rid of the deficit spending in the fifth year. That means reallocation, that means looking at it differently.
Like immediately? Or just an agreement that we want to look at it and make changes?
It needs to be changed before the next five-year forecast, which would be in May.
Okay.
There'll need to be some work done.
Sure.
And obviously, we're up against a time deadline here. So I would need to believe that that was where the board was headed and that we were not going to go back into deficit spending.
Sure. Jenny, do you believe we'll have any answers by May? In regards to anything else that's out there floating around?
I think we'll have, we'll have answers on, but we'll know who the governor is and we'll know whether they're going to buy into the new way we're looking at funding schools. We'll have an answer on that. But as far as, we'll know more.
But we're, I mean, without knowing at this point what that high school redesign is, to me, that's hard for me to say because I don't know what those investments are going to be. And for me, it might be worth that investment. And I can't say for certain that I wouldn't be willing to invest in something.
But even without those investments, we're already into deficit spending.
Right, but if you.
So we haven't allowed ourselves, because we haven't reallocated, we haven't gotten rid of that at this point, we haven't allowed ourselves that freedom to do that. We do have cash reserves. We may make a decision that that's a worthwhile investment.
Right.
But right now, we have deficit spending.
But, so even if we took other things off the table, but then choose to invest with that, we may then have it again. And what I'm hearing you say is you want it not to be there at all. And for me, that is not comfortable because I don't know what's coming to ask for that investment.
And that's true in every decision that we make. So you have to do the best that you can do to leave yourself as much room as you can to invest. And I talked about this when we were talking about the teacher contract. And I mentioned the high school piece, that we didn't know what those costs were going to be. It's a global picture that we have to look at in every decision that we make. It's not a piecemeal decision.
Right.
I look at, and Jenny actually did a great job of surfacing the uncertainties within this document. Just a few of them. We have two state biennium budgets to happen. On the 15 biennium budget, we were due to be the biggest loser in the state at $10 million. That was a big one. The economic slowdown is predicted in 20, between now and 2021. There's a full reappraisal in Butler County. Could be positive, we don't know that for sure. It really depends. Nobody anticipated 2008 to hit in the way that it did. We have the elections not just for the governor, but also for our legislators. And the House could go either way. We're really not sure where that's going to go. And then we also have the school funding work group, which has done a terrific job pulling thoughts together. But like any other piece of legislation, it may not resemble itself by the time it goes through our legislators and our governor. So there's a lot of uncertainties on the horizon. Allowing ourselves the best, most conservative approach and being careful in what we're doing now is, to me, where I would go, Brad. That's my answer back to you.
So what I hear you saying is to get a yes vote from you on the five-year forecast tonight, we need to have a plan to cut $3.7 million out of our budget by May?
Yes.
Or additional revenues.
Or additional.
Or shake a tree somewhere.
Or additional revenues would be nice. And I think the work group is going to do tremendous things, but I'm not assured that it's going to look anything like that by the time we go through.
Or be funded.
Or be funded.
Or be, yeah.
And the two state biennium budgets too. Not only knows where those will go.
The other thing too, just to piggyback off those comments, is if the, if things are recalibrated and the red goes away and becomes black by May, the rationale for that recalibration could change about 10 times between now or May and the end of that fifth year. There's always things that are coming up and changing. I know you all know that. I just kind of want to put it out there for the record in terms of where we're sitting at today.
And on our personal homes, we try not to, at least I think the general practice is to try not. is to try not to spend more than you're taking in. You set savings aside, you set a rainy day fund aside for those opportunities where you think you need to invest that somewhere. But you don't generally make a practice and stay financially stable of spending more than you take in. And I think we should be treating taxpayer dollars the same way.
And, and for all of us, it's a best guess.
Right.
Everything we do is a best guess.
It's a scenario and could change no matter what.
What's a little bit better than a guess?
Well.
There's some, there's assumptions.
Assumptions, assumptions.
Assumptions based on information. But yeah, five years out, it, it is difficult. And I do know that there's going to be assumptions that we're making that are absolutely wrong. But it's, it's the, it's based on the information. Like I said, it's a snapshot.
Right.
So what we know right now. Lynda, does it make you feel more comfortable though, if we're going to come back with a cash balance policy review and recommendation and the reservation of fund balances? Does that make you more comfortable? Does that?
I absolutely believe those are important to put into place. I don't think they address specifically the spending deficit I see in the forecast.
Okay.
But yes, I am more comfortable with doing that. I think that's something we needed to do. We put that policy into place in the first place because we knew we needed to get to a point of financial stability and that forced us to rethink how we did things.
Yeah, and I remember we were struggling even going to 60 days.
Right.
I mean, it was, it was tight around here.
Come a long way.
It was, it was bad.
So what impact does it make? And this is more of just, I, I, what impact is made when we say that in order to approve this five-year forecast, we need to be considering $3.7 million in cuts? Okay?
Reallocation.
Or reallocation for five years, so for five years down the line, right? In a forecast that we know is not overly reliable in that fifth year, right? What message does that send to the things that are currently happening, the momentum that we have in the district? That's my biggest fear. If we were talking about year two, year three, I would be right on board with you saying, we need to be having some really tough conversations right now about what we need to do to get our five-year forecast where it needs to be. That fifth year, while it is $3.7 million, I am a little hesitant because I believe that when our wonderful reporter publishes that in the paper and says, this is what we have to do, what statement that's sending to the community about the forward momentum that we currently have happening in the district? And again, I get it, I understand it and I know where we need to be, but man, there's so many things that are up in the air predicting that number, that I just have an extremely hard time spending a lot of time and energy between now and May, having all those conversations about that fifth year.
The fifth year, when it could change.
I struggle with that a bit.
Good and bad, but.
Again, if it was year two, three, or maybe even four, that fifth year, I just struggle with that.
So I think it sends the message to our community that we're going to continue to be innovative, but we're going to be fiscally responsible in how we do it. There's also a compounding effect. If we start looking at this now and making small changes, by the time we get out four or five years from now, that will have a good, a very positive impact as well. It's not 3.7, wait until the fifth year and do that.
Sure.
And I have confidence that our staff is able to come up with ways to do this in an innovative way as well.
What if in May, the forecast, we come back, we know more at that time, if the fifth year is still showing a deficit, deficit spending?
That might be the time.
Because we have not, we've had a few forecasts without any red in it.
Right.
And this is, and this is the first one where we're showing red, which none of us want to see red, but there's red. So what if we say, if May comes back and it's showing red in that fifth year in May again, after we know more, then we're going to ring the alarm and say, it's shown up twice now?
We would certainly know more.
I was going to say, there'd be more information at that point.
I get what you're saying Jenny, and you're saying when we see the trend, we do something about it.
Correct.
So for me, when I look at in 2016, we were spending $150 million in our operating budget and we're talking by the end of this forecast, almost a $40 million increase by 2023. That is an alarm bell. And maybe it does go back a little bit to my history as a veteran board member, as Brad said, but they were, the district was spending $190 million when I came on board and overspending their revenue by $9 million, which led us to a very negative place for the district and for the community. Painful cuts. And those are still resonating in our community. We still hear it in community conversations today. That's a concern to me and I don't want to miss that ringing bell this time around.
Yeah. Oh, I don't either.
Yeah.
I don't want to miss ringing it.
I think there's a commitment from everybody at the table to make that red go away. I just think that it's, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Brad, but it's essentially pressing pause now and saying, what does that look like in May when we know who the governor is, what the budget's going to be?
Yeah. I'm not saying we shouldn't be having conversations. I think absolutely we should be having conversations as we move forward, especially with this popping up in red. What I don't believe that we should be spending a lot of time and effort on right now is really creating any type of strategy around what are we going to do to shore that up by May. I'm willing to be challenged on that thought. I just kind of feel like it's, I don't know, I just feel like some, somewhat of it's being kind of like a Chicken Little, right? Like, like what's going to happen when there's just so many things up in there? I would rather spend way more energy really talking about the permanent improvement aspect and I think I've brought that up multiple times, that we, we need to be really looking at our facilities and our facility plan and what we're doing. And so there's a lot of energy around that and that ties into that five-year forecast as well. Because the reality is, is if we don't choose that path, then it's going to make a bigger impact on the five years. So there are so many things that I feel like we just don't know that instead of talking about how to, I, I don't know, I just feel like there's conversation needs to be had before we have that conversation. And so that's why I would, I would say to approve the five-year forecast as it is, have conversation about it. And again, if it happens in May, then we know that there's things that we really need to execute on at that point.
All right. So with all due respect, I don't hear that commitment to deal with the deficit. I hear a, let's look at it down the road. That's just how I'm interpreting what you said, Brad. You're certainly welcome to have that opinion. But that's not a commitment. And I do agree with you, the permanent improvement levy should be a part of this whole conversation.
Sure, yeah.
And we are overdue for that conversation.
I'm, I am more than happy and willing to make a commitment to have conversations about what we need to be doing to get us in the green. I'm not saying I'm willing to make a commitment to have a lot of work sessions about reallocating or cutting $3.7 million on a number that we honestly, it's a shot in the dark right now. We, there's, there are so many unknowns and so many things happening that that could be affected. And maybe you're right, maybe in May that it's worse off than we thought. However, we, we really just don't know. That's just where, that's where I'm at right now.
Well, you could actually say that about the entire document, but I have confidence in Jenny's projections. And I'm looking at all the projections, not just that one, and saying it's a shot in the dark. And I have confidence in what she's put forward.
Yeah.
So.
As do I, as do I. I just, I think that fifth year is more of an unreliable number than year one, two, and three. Is that an accurate statement Jenny?
Yeah, but further you go out, the more unknowns. And, and year five is, there are a lot of, and Lynda's mentioned this, you know, there are a lot of things that are coming up, the revaluation and the biennial budgets, there's a lot of unknowns. And as we know more, we know more.
Right.
And we've, we've made the best assumptions we can based on trends, based on information that we're seeing in the economy and things like that. And.
Jenny, your forecasts have been very accurate. When we look at, back at what our actuals are versus our budget, you're doing a great job with that.
They have, but I also don't, I mean, it, it makes me very nervous when we do talk about year five. I mean, it does. I get nervous because there are assumptions and it could turn out differently.
Right. We've seen previously where you put red out there and then it's turned into black because you prefer to go on the conservative side in your assumptions when you do a forecast because you would rather project on the conservative side than the aggressive side. And that's your philosophy in how you forecast. And we have seen that historically in your forecast.
And I, yes, I would much rather be conservative than there not be red show up in the five-year forecast and we don't talk about it and then.
In looking at this five-year forecast comparatively speaking to others, have there, have you, do you remember a time that there's been so many things up in the air compared to this or is this pretty normal?
This is normal.
Is it normal?
Yeah, it is. I mean, every year when we look at the forecast, I mean, we know what our insurance is going to be for three years, our, we have negotiated agreements for, so there's a lot of things that we do know.
Right.
Compared to other times.
Okay.
Yeah. Pretty typical.
There's another labor contract within this five-year forecast as well.
Two year, the last two years.
Right. So we had enough discussion? Any further discussion at this time?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve the five-year forecast as presented?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
No.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We will move to our strategic planning conversations. Thank you. Thank you. Don't look ahead. Big surprise.
This is a rough draft.
Cute kids.
Those are our kids.
Hmm?
Those are our kids.
I hope so.
So before we start going through this, I'd want to reiterate a few things that I just said. One is, this is a rough draft and I cannot overstate enough how much help and input the executive team, who, most of who are here in the back, had on this working document and I'll explain what I mean in just a second. But it is a rough draft. We received not too long ago from LEI, a potential rough draft from them and without much conversation or follow-through, sent it out to exec team and the feedback was pretty much unanimous, this doesn't feel like us and it feels like a one-off and something separate from our history here in Lakota and also our present and our future. And so we used a lot of the data from LEI, some of the suggestions, but essentially this rough draft in front of you has been revamped to give a fuller picture, a truer reflection of Lakota. And so this feels like us and I think you'll see it here. And I'm giving it to you tonight, again, as a rough draft for wanting to get feedback from all of you in the coming weeks. So this is not finished by any stretch, but we are chopping at the bit, so to speak, to get some of these things in place, just because it ties into everything that we're doing. Whether it's, you can, you can see and feel the cybersecurity piece in this, we can talk about the internships, we can talk about current things related to diversity. Those things are reflected in this document. I'm sure there are a few things that are not in here that we didn't get and that's what I need help on from all of you. And, and we've been fine tuning it as late as today, just this, this morning. So I want to hit a few of the highlights. I am not going to read everything to you because I do want you to spend some time on it. That page is just sort of the, the intro with all of our faces on it. But this was the mission, not from LEI, but really what we came up with from list, from all of the community conversations, coffee chats, conversations with community members, but also with our own staff and our kids. And again, those things weren't really reflected in somebody coming in from the outside, it was something more from, from, from us. And so the mission, and now I'm violating what I just said about not reading to you, as proposed would be, everything we do is designed to provide a future-ready, student-centered learning experience for every single child. And we really believe that it comes down to that. It's not a one-size-fits-all and there's certainly potential for growth. So I offered that up as our rough draft. And then the vision is going to be extended into some tenants and I already alluded to one about the being fiscally responsible. But the vision, which is very easy and fits what we've been doing at Lakota, is we are personalized, we are future-ready, we are fiscally responsible, and we are in this together. And that ties in the community aspect, not just the staff and the kids, but the 70% of the community that doesn't have a direct correlation or connection to the school district. And that's reflected here. So what we did is we took the vision statements and we spelled them out into action steps. So the first one is we are personalized and there's some opening statements about what that means to us. And again, this is the portion where I'm not going to read everything to you, but I do want you to spend some time because this is going to be a, a living, breathing document for us. And so it's not just going to be a three-year, hey, this is what we have in place for three years because we know how fast things have changed and have occurred around us and new opportunities like Bel Cam and other things like that have come up. So it's going to change and be a living and breathing document. We don't want it just to stick it on a wall and forget about it. We don't want to just stick it in a folder and forget about it and stick it on a shelf, but this is who we are and what we are about. If you go to the next page, it talks about what the personalized action plans look like and how that ties into, a lot of the issues are around personalized learning, portrait of a graduate, and how we define success for our kids. We are future-ready and all of you have been involved in some capacity, whether or not it was the future-ready event that we have, or even with education elements, or the portrait of a graduate that we are building out. But we're talking, what does that mean for our kids in terms of what is now being coined as the four Es? We have added one with entrepreneurship. And so we have added a fourth E to our, sort of our repertoire moving forward for our kids. The next page, again, following the theme, is the action plan for how are we future-ready? Again, you see some common themes with personalized learning, with that portrait of a graduate, with that real-world learning. We have the facilities plan as part of this and also the financial stability in here. And again, this is a look at, this is not a prescriptive, day-by-day, here's where it's going to look like at the end of three years, but here are the things that we have been building traditionally in Lakota, where we're at now and where we want to head in terms of the needs that our kids have. The third major cog would be fiscally responsible, which all of you have mentioned that that is one of our key highlights. We wanted to make sure that it was reflected here in one of our four major tenants and it is. And so Jenny had extensive look at this and the built around that action plan as well. Cute kids. And we know that this is one of our priorities. So in no particular order do any of these four fall. And then the last one is tying all of us together. The schools are a reflection of the community. You hear Joe Hinson talk about that. You hear our legislators talk about that as well. And so we want to make sure that we know that only 30% of our, our community has a direct tie into the schools and how do we benefit that other 70%? And that's certainly part of this action plan as well. When we talk about what that Lakota experience is, we want to be, and this is reflected as well, to continue the transparency and strengthen the communication with all of our stakeholders. We have the diversity piece listed in here as well. Again, this is just a very brief overview, just a rough draft of where we feel we are at right now. Again, this is just a very brief overview, just a rough draft of where we feel we are at right now. And as the young lady's shirt says, when in doubt, dance it out. First glance, first blush. Are we on the right track?
I like it a lot better than where we're going with LEI.
I was going to say it, yeah.
I agree.
Better than what we said in that.
Me too, and none of that was rehearsed.
Your first bullet on we're in this together is incorporate and encourage students' staff voice in Lakota learning experience. I would say that that's probably a priority in this plan as well. Do you feel like you've captured students' staff voice to develop this, you and your team?
Yeah, I mean, we will certainly, that'll be a part of the communication plan, right, going out and going forward. But I, I think, I think we've done a lot of that. I mean, we've had like 40 community conversations last year. We don't have as many this year gearing up, but we still have a lot of opportunity for people moving forward for, for that buy-in, for that way. And I do want this to be sort of a, a living, breathing document. And it's purposely listed as starting in 2019, but that'd be January of 2019. And so, I think that ties in with new board members coming on in January. I know that's something that, you know, the board has talked about. And I think that if it were like the end of a school year, you lose some traction in the summer. So, I like that it would be a turnaround time at January 1st. I think there's always momentum when we get voice at the table. And I know I'm rambling now, Brad, but I think it's there. And I think there's a lot of positivity going forward, but, you know, we have to be fiscally responsible in how we do it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I trust that downline, this will be executed. Like, I, I am confident in that. It was more of a question on, do you feel like you were able to gain enough voice from the stakeholders to be able to create this and know that it would be accepted downline?
I would, I would say yes, and I think we can tie the community conversations and other things to that. LEI did do a lot, not a lot, but did do some research outside of those conversations. So, is there potential for more opportunities? Sure. But I don't think it changes probably the whole of this document.
Can you share that research with the board?
Yeah, we, we would do that when we got this board approved at a future meeting. We would have the backup documents that include what are the growth areas, what are the strength areas? And we used that when we built this out. But this is more of the out-front. This is the direction we're going. And it's, it's almost like the anecdotal record of things or the supporting documents for the strategic plan. But again, I got to give a lot of credit to the executive team that we just felt like, hey, that, that wasn't us. And so, we need to get to where it's Lakota.
I know this is high level, but going through this, it feels like what we're heading after, you know, like what we're going towards. And there's been a lot of momentum. There's been a lot of things going on. We've had a lot of conversations. But to be able to put it kind of in a document to try to capture where that momentum is and where we believe it will go, I think that this document does a great job doing that. So, I think that your team hit the nail on the head. I'm looking forward to seeing some of the supporting documents for it. But I, I think it's a great, great starting point.
The other thing too, we thought, was that the vision with those four "we" Rs is pretty easy to remember and that we want to tie everything that we're doing back to that.
Yep.
And that's part of messaging as well.
It's not too wordy. Same thing with the mission statement. I think they can tend to be wordy.
Right.
Something everyone can understand.
And we, we wordsmithed it and we, you know, got in a room and the, I think this is a very useful, purposeful document that doesn't get stale. And if it does, we update it. The initial thing we had from LEI was 34 pages.
Oh, good lord.
And it just, again, it wasn't us.
This does seem simpler and more eas- easily to execute, easier to execute. 34 pages?
They're all taped up in the superintendent conference room right now with words written around them.
Wow.
Your team is laughing back.
I know. They, they know what the words are. Anything else? I do want feedback from you. Please take a look at it. If we're missing something, let us know. But it was a pretty quick turnaround.
I think it would be nice to do a community conversation on this before, like, before we finalize it, just to run it by
Yep.
everyone.
I'll get a hold of...
Last blush for community input.
Sure.
You have an opportunity this week to run it past the business community.
Yep. Yep, that's a good point.
Like a good place to start.
And I think we have to couch it in terms of, not that we wouldn't make changes, but I don't think we would make wholesale changes. It would just be to make sure that things are represented or reflected in here. I just wouldn't want like a certain segment to say, well, you need to have this or, you know. It's not a, up for debate. It's more of, it's more of a community conversation. Right. It's like a, the community conversation
Yeah.
component of, we hear you and here are the things that we can do.
My, my only concern with doing a community conversation around it is when we're going to fit it in because I know that you would like to get this approved prior to January. And I know we have a long list of community conversations.
We already have going.
Randy just sent a note saying he wanted to get one more in
Oh, did he?
This year. So...
Okay.
Is that the one that came out today?
Yeah.
All right, I'll circle back with him.
I didn't see it.
It might have just gone to...
It just went to the community engagement people.
Okay.
I just don't know if we can find a date, to be honest, between now and December.
We can see. All right.
Anything else on this?
Another conversation on this?
I think, just the, the other thing that I had was the administrative guideline. And I think for sake of time and trying to get through some of these things, that I will work with Mr. Vogelmann and our high school principals on some things that we're working out for our students. So, for tonight, that's all I'll say on that one. And then, boardsmanship follow-up. Do you want to?
Sure. Uh, we had a conversation, whenever that conversation occurred, about what would it look like to spend some of our work session time? And so, just as a reminder, we said, what would it look like in October if we did one formal board meeting and one work session meeting? To really dig into a lot of the topics that we're talking about. But what would it look like if we spent at least one of those, or some of that time during that work session to focus on boardsmanship and what does that look like to grow as a board? And the idea would be that if we decided collectively that we wanted to continue this format into the new year, I know that November and December are out just because of the tight timeframe and things going on, that we could then carry that through next year, right? And so, when I think of boardsmanship, and I, I really want this time to kind of be open to all of us having a conversation around this and what we think we could use this time for. But for me, one of the things that I have had a passion for, and I think I've mentioned it multiple times, is what does it look like for us to create handbooks, onboarding documents for new board members? That is something that we could do during that time, possibly review during that time. We know that in the future, there will be new board members at some point on the board. And to have a document that captures kind of the ins and outs of what we do and how we do it, it would be great to have that. The other thing too, that I'd love to do more of is really as a team, grow and learn together. To look at some of the things, yes, we are on the governance side and we need to stay there. We don't need to get in management, but it's always good to be able to grow and learn together and understand some of the trends in education that are coming up. And what does that look like if we were to focus on a book study, things like that? I know that Linda had given us, gosh, this was almost when I first, when we first came on back in January, February, there is a, I believe the checklist is from OSBA, if I'm not mistaken.
It's used in the Southwest region.
Southwest region. Kind of a checklist on highly effective boards and what does that look like? And looking at the things that are on that checklist and saying, where are some areas that we feel that we're pretty strong in? And where are some areas that we believe we could grow? And maybe define some areas that we could use this time during work sessions to work towards. So, those are just some of the thoughts that I had. And I think that if we, if we were to put our minds together and really think about it, I believe that we could grow as a board. And I'd mentioned to the board, I, I believe this was after NSBA, which was what, back in April? I attended a session. I'm not sure if any of you attended it with me. But it was a couple guys from the University of Washington. And what they did was they wanted to look at the impact of the Board of Education on student achievement. And is there any correlation? And what they found is that there actually, there is a lot of correlation. And they're kind of highlighted the top five things that boards had. And I'll share that information with you at some point. But some of the things included on that list were board handbooks, onboarding manuals, clear focus and roles. And I was thrilled that we had OSBA come down not long ago and help us kind of go through that process. But just looking at that research too and saying, how do we fold that in and just become more and more highly effective? So, I'll open it up to other discussion that you all might have around that. And if I'm the only one thinking this, then that's, it is what it is, but...
I mean, we, we talked about it in agenda, and I'm in agreement. I think it would be good. We talked about doing a book study and mentioned doing the book, Culturized.
Correct.
Which I think would be, I'm in agreement would be worthwhile, and I'd like to see us do that. And I like the idea of using that checklist that you had brought forward and, and doing that as well. So, I think, again, if we do, if we're going to switch potentially to doing, like today, I feel like we were doing a work session, but then it ended up because we had to have so much more formalized with the five-year forecast. This sort of became more of a meeting than a work session than I would have liked. So, it ended up not being as
Work sessioning.
work session as I'd hoped. But I feel like it, it would be beneficial to just take, you know, just 20 minutes in those meetings. I think it's worth that investment of time, in my opinion. So, I like that concept and, and would be willing to go forward when we talked about it in agenda, so.
Have we made a decision if we're going to go forward with that, this format, the one meeting and?
I think, I think so.
I think it's a good idea, is my personal opinion, but I didn't know if we'd made a decision.
Ultimately, that would be decided at the organizational meeting, correct?
In January, okay.
But I think we were kind of waiting after this one to see if that was something that the board thought would be beneficial. I, I would say it is, just because I believe there are things that we want to dig a little bit deeper in. And I believe the conversations when we talk about five-year forecasts and stuff like that, that's a perfect place to have those more informal conversations and discussions as a board.
I, I don't think we can go wrong trying to, for lack of a better word, be a better board. Do more development, in my opinion. And I like to read, so I'm in.
Do you have thoughts you would like to share?
Not really.
Are you?
I think the board should be building out what the workshops look like together, but
Okay.
It's unclear how those will be different at this point in time. And this probably wasn't a good example, this meeting.
Oh, correct.
It wasn't really, yeah, a work, yeah.
Correct.
It was kind of a combo.
Correct.
So, in what way? As far as the topics or, I think, just the structure? Okay.
Can you explain more?
Yeah. So, do you want to provide more input on that?
I think the entire board should provide input on that.
So, would you like to do that now? Or how would you like to provide that input?
No, I think we should have a discussion about it or send in thoughts on it or whatever. Todd's not here either, so I think all board members should have a chance to weigh in on what do we think we would benefit from to have at those work sessions? How should they be structured?
So, instead of, I'm just trying to understand. So, instead of doing an agenda for the workshop, we would all put in input of what we would?
No, I'm talking about as the structure is built for it. So, maybe January's workshop.
Okay.
So, maybe have a workshop on how you want to do the work session.
Have a meeting, a planned meeting?
That could be a part of the discussion.
In January.
I, so the only statement I have for that is, I'm, I'm fine with that. I really am. I do not, let me collect my thoughts. I don't want to get to January, and then we'd be talking about it for February. Then get to February and be talking about it for March, and it just continue to be put off, put off, put off, for whatever reason that may be. I'm hoping there isn't a reason. I believe that no group of people are perfect and that there's always things we can do to move towards being more highly effective as a board. And I have said this, and I'll keep saying it, that I believe that there are areas that we can grow. And I believe when it comes specifically to what things we can do, I would, we need to move forward with board handbooks and onboarding documents specifically.
So, after you and I talked about that, Brad, and I was in agreement with you when we talked about it, I contacted OSBA, talked to them about the template. That's an option to us. It's $500. They provide us with the template. We fill it in. I think there are good options out there. Have started building an outline of things that I think would be useful to put into that. Happy to work with you on it, as I said when we talked. I, I have no objection to pulling together a handbook. I think it's a great idea.
Can, can we go on like other district websites? Like, didn't Cheryl, was that her name?
Mm-hmm.
Didn't she say there were a couple of schools that she thought had good handbooks? I mean, are they public record, like online?
Sure, yep.
I mean...
Yeah, I've done some of the research.
Yeah, I was wondering if, yeah. Instead of reinventing the wheel.
I'm not trying to insert myself here when I say this, and I don't want to offend any of the four of you. But maybe we couch this under the legislative side of the board, which would be Linda and Brad and the two of you talk to the rest of the board about what that looks like and building it out. To your point, Brad, you don't want it to get to January and we're just getting started.
I also don't think, I also think we should all have input in it.
I, I do too. I'm just trying to
I mean, this is where I think
Move, move things forward, that's all.
Sometimes where we get lost is that we got silos.
Okay. Yeah, I, if we can all agree that we will be on January, building out a plan for the work sessions. If we can all have an agreement or understanding that we want to move forward with work sessions as we move into the new year and spend the January work session where we will leave January work session having a clear understanding of what the framework will look like for each of those work sessions. We don't have to have nailed down what we're going to be doing specifically. But have a framework nailed down, I'm fine with that. I, I am also more than happy and willing to get moving on the handbook and the onboarding process. And so, if the board is in agreement that the legislative committee owns that and runs forward with that, I'm happy to do that. It's a passion, and I think it's something that's highly needed on our board. And so, I'd love to move forward, and we can talk about how that would be reported out for the board or get input from the board. So, it can be co-created, because if it's not co-created, it's not going to last and it's not going to work.
Agreed.
And so, we need to make sure that that's a thing and that happens. So, as long as we all have that understanding, I'm good. And we can get Todd's feedback when we see him next. Julie, do you have?
I think, again, we talked, the last time we talked about doing the handbook, we talked about Linda and I working on one and you and Kelly working on one.
A handbook versus the onboarding work.
Right. So, you know, we had talked about that previously. And so, now we're talking about switching up those teams. And again, I think as long as, I, I think everyone needs to feel that their voice is heard in this process and has input. And people aren't cut out of that process, so the same voices aren't continually represented and others aren't. So, I think that's just going to be important in that.
Well, let's, let's talk that though. I mean, let's, how do you see that communication happening? Because again, there's power in co-creation for sustainability. And so, if Linda and I work on that, how, how do you see that that maybe could happen? I don't want to put you, I'm not putting you on the spot. I just want to make sure that as we walk out of here, we have forward momentum in this and there's no...
I think if you guys, I, I mean, I can't speak for Kelly. I, like, so I don't know if you want to speak first. I guess I would be comfortable with you guys bringing it forward as long as you are open to revisions in it. And you don't bring it forward expecting that to be the, the finished document.
Okay. So, maybe it's more...
It's got to be input from all of us.
So, maybe there's more chunks of it that would be brought forward, sections at a time?
Maybe that's, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Instead of coming to us with a document said, here's the handbook.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, I think everybody should have a piece of...
Does that, does that feel good?
Whatever the board desires.
Okay. All right. Well, I feel, yes.
I also feel like our next meeting is until November 19th, right, correct?
Yes.
And I feel like some, somebody should update Todd because we won't see him until November 19th. So, I feel like he should.
Yeah.
Well, I, and I'll see him at policy as well.
Okay, yeah, maybe.
We have a policy meeting coming up.
We don't have a meeting until...
So, I'm more than happy to update him on that and what we're, what we're talking about.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other thoughts on that?
Ma'am.
All right. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Well done on the microphones.
Yeah, they're really cool.
They work very nicely.
I can't figure out how to turn them on or off.
Do you hold it down to turn them off or just go it off?
Yes, just hold it down, and then take your finger off, and it'll go.
Oh, there you go.
January, we're going to have training?
Oh, there it is.